Just like usual, the attendees who are on the agenda will bring them over at appropriate time.
Okay.
Commissioner, if you're ready, I think we're
We're ready.
populated here, okay. Housekeeping for the beginning here, County Commissioner meeting for September 17th. If you are a member of the audience and the attendees and you have a public comment or a question, please utilize the raise hand function of your on the Zoom and you'll be recognized as it's being monitored all the time. So we'll announce that a little later, but if you do that anytime, we'll get the attention of the chair and try to bring you in.
That's great. Thank you, Jamie. Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for September 17th. We will begin, as is customary, with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America And to the republic
For which it stands
One nation Under God Indivisible With liberty
Justice for all
For all Very good, very good. A lot of good words in that anthem. All right, so let's move on to the public comment. Are there any raised hands at this moment?
There are not.
All right, then we'll proceed with the approval of the minutes and we'll seek a motion for that.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting as printed.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of our previous meeting. Any comment or question or additions or deletions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. We'll move now to our treasurer's report, Mrs. Sally Newton.
Morning.
Morning.
We had receipts on nine, fifteen, and sixteen of one million, six hundred eighty-three-thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. That brings us to a total cash of three million, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Our expenditures this week were one million, six hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. Our tax claim is ninety thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-three cents. So that leaves us a cash balance of one million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the treasurer's report as presented. Question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. And that will move on to our HR, Human Resources, report, beginning with Michelle Idris.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Under resignations and terminations, Janet Ross, Adult Abuse Investigator, resignation effective September 25th. Bryson Loper, Telecommunicator, resignation effective October 2nd. Linda Miller, Full-Time Correctional Officer, retirement effective September 5th. Mary Diaz-Pagan, Full-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective September 11th. Ashley Charestini, Full-Time Correctional Officer, job abandonment effective September 8. Romario Canno, Full-Time Correctional Officer, job abandonment effective September 9. Christian Bard, Full-Time Correctional Officer, job abandonment effective September 10th. And Harold Alexander, Case Worker, resignation effective September 25th.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those resignations and terminations as read. Any question, comment from anyone? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Under leaves of absence, Dawn Klein from Children and Youth, two-week leave of absence effective September 10th with an expected return date of September 28th. And Yaritza Ramos Lopez, Community Action Partnership, 12-week leave of absence effective September 10th, expected return date December 3rd.
Make a motion to approve the two leaves of the absence as presented.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve those leaves. Any question or comment, clarification? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, Jelissa Johnson, Promotion from Team Clerk in Domestic Relations to General Clerk A Floater at the rate of one thousand, one dollar and ninety cents by weekly effective October 5th. Serena Cruz, Promotion from Team Clerk in Domestic Relations to Customer Service Specialist at the rate of one thousand, one dollar and ninety cents by weekly effective October 5th. Katrina Heller, Promotion from Customer Service Clerk in Domestic Relations to Team Clerk at the rate of nine hundred and thirty-two dollars by weekly effective October 5th. And Audrey Raukow, Promotion from Deputy Director of Adult Probation to Director of Probation Services at the rate of three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents by weekly effective September 21st.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes of status as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those changes. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so ordered.
Under other transactions, Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Amy Bears as a clerk typist 2 at the rate of eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents by weekly effective September 28th. The Department of Emergency Services would like to hire the following four full-time telecommunicators, all at the rate of fifteen dollars per hour, all effective September 21st, and that is George Anthony Jr., Nathan Harner, Connor Criston, and Justin Tenley. The Information Technology Services Department would like to hire Corey Saracini as an operations specialist at the rate of one thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents by weekly effective September 21st. President Judge Tillwalk would like to rehire Madeline Morrissey as a full-time district justice clerk at the rate of seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents by weekly effective September 21st. President Judge Tillwalk would like to hire Vicki Beck as a full-time district justice clerk at the rate of seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents by weekly effective September 28th. The Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire the following three full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of fifteen dollars and forty-five cents per hour, all effective September 28th, and that is Chris Kreider, Jamie Vitale, and Kaiwan Lindsay Jr. President Judge Tillwalk would like to hire Jessica Coit as an adult probation officer at the rate of one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents by weekly effective September 21st.
I'll make a motion to approve those hires.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all the transactions previously read plus the following. Christopher McCarrick, a salary increaser, he's a telecommunicator in the Department of Emergency Services, to the rate of seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents per hour effective September 6th. And Megan Ryland Tanner, it is a longevity salary increase as assistant district attorney in the district attorney's office, to the rate of two thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents by weekly, and that will be effective October 4th.
All moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions for the salary board. Any question or comment? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved. Thank you, Michelle.
Good morning.
Morning.
Under conference seminar request, under mandated, Robert
Stephanie, would you mind introducing yourself and then you can proceed? Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Noel, Benefits Coordinator in the Human Resource Department.
Thank you.
Under conference seminar request, under mandated, Robert Mees from Planning would like to attend the PA Construction Codes Academy online, four hundred and eighty-five dollar total registration fee, 30 credits mandated by the Department of Labor and Industry. Crystal Leedom and Jennifer Whitman from the District Attorney's Office would like to attend the 41st Annual DUI Association Conference in Seven Springs on November 18th and 19th, five hundred dollar total registration fee, lodging, meal, and full reimbursement, 10 and 1/2 credits mandated by Court Reporting Network, and alcohol highway safety certification.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the COVID restrictions at the time.
I'll second that motion, whatever that means, I don't know.
Well, we had like 33 positives yesterday, so if we get in one of the counties that is not allowed to travel.
I'm sure we'll comply by the laws at the time of the conferences. But, thank you. Any other comment? We have a motion and a second regarding the motion. If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you, Stephanie.
All right, no raised hands. We can go to Mike Anderson, and this is a Board of Election meeting since they're considering the ballot.
Okay.
All right, I'll call the Board of Election to order and we'll listen to our director, Michael Anderson.
Good morning, Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, Voter Registration. What I'm here for today is to, a little tricky, get the, can't say that word.
Luminary.
Thank you. Approval for the 2012 general election ballot. As you probably know, we have not received certification from the Department of State for the candidates for this ballot due to a pending lawsuit dealing with the Green Party candidates. What I would like to do today, though, is ask the board to give approval on the ballot specimens that I have sent to you, that this is basically the setup that we will use, pending certification from the Department of State, giving me the leeway then to just make whatever change I have to make based on the certification and or court ruling from the State Supreme Court on that Green Party candidate question. So today, basically, I'm asking for your approval and then having the ability to make the change based on the certification and then answering any questions you may have.
All right, I'm assuming that the board members have had an opportunity to review the ballots that Michael sent out to us, so with that in mind, do I have a motion to approve these pending, anything that comes down from the courts?
Make a motion to approve the ballots. They look very nice, and they're all on one side, I like that. And I don't know, did you lay these out, Michael?
Yes, I did.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Is that all part of the motion?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
Is there any discussion about the ballots?
I just wanted to ask about the Green Party.
What's our issue?
Might be resolved, Michael?
So it's the Democratic part, my understanding is it's a Democratic Party lawsuit, I guess, to have the Green Party candidates for president and vice president removed. We are told that that hopefully will be resolved soon. We're still on task and telling people, end of the month, very latest, the first week in October is when we hope the ballots will be emailed. And so that's really all we know at this point, we're just kind of waiting. But I know there is a stay in place that the department cannot certify the ballots until that is heard by the State Supreme Court.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Bill.
No, that's fine, that's fine. We can't get too much information. I mean, it's actually very confusing, but I did see that we weren't actually able to totally approve the ballot and have them printed based on this stay. So with that said, all those in favor of approving
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. That's all right. I'm curious, Michael, who proves the Spanish? I'm, I mean, I'm not fluent in Spanish, are you?
I am not. So basically, we had lose, do all of the checking from the primary, and we're obviously able to use the same, most of everything stayed the same. Anything new that's on the ballot actually was provided to us by the Department of State. They had given us the Spanish that should be actually on. So it's a combination, so county level and then also provided by the state, but that all has been, has been checked. And just kind of, I guess, maybe before you vote, just to let you know, we have to proceed forward as far as testing, and that's what we are doing, since we are using a new printer for these mail-in and absentee ballots. We are giving them proofs, we're having them print these tests and proofs, we can make sure as a new printer that it works on our machines. And then obviously, before anything goes out as far as being printed, you know, we have to wait for that certification and obviously more board approval.
All right, are you ready for the question?
Yes, sir.
All right. All those in favor of approving the ballots as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ballots are approved. Anything else, Michael?
Yeah, just a couple of things for the board that I think is important. We touched base on it a little earlier, but there's a lot of confusion because of third-party mailings and people receiving multiple applications. A lot of, some people think those are ballots. I assure you, no ballots have been sent, no one is getting duplicate ballots, which you are getting duplicates of our applications. And so what we're letting people know is, is if you have filled out an application and you do get another one in the mail from one of these third parties, don't do it again. We have your first one. So be patient, you're not, you don't have your ballot yet because we can't send it to you yet. So that's a little bit of confusion, so I think that's important for people to know.
On that, Michael, quickly, Chairman, if you don't mind, a question in here.
That's fine.
Or a comment. Do you have a rough estimate of when ballots will go out? Because that will start to stem that, that a bit, I'm sure, when people are thinking, I didn't get my ballots, I'm going to just keep on filling these out until I get a ballot. About when do you think people will start seeing them in their mailboxes, the actual ballots?
Yeah, so we've been telling people along end of September, early October. If I had to give you my best guess, Jamie, right now, I would tell you the 28th of September. But unfortunately, I don't know, we're really just waiting on that ruling from the State Supreme Court. And, you know, they know that it's being held up because of that, but, you know, it's going to be when they decide, and that's where we are, because there is a stay on that certification, and I won't send ballots out without it. So, but the 28th is where we're hoping for at this point. And that's all I really can say at this point, as far as our best estimate.
Thank you.
Michael, did you want to mention the difference in the South Anvil ballot?
Yes, thank you. So South Anvil does have a liquor referendum, that is the only of the 60 precincts that does have that referendum. There is a plain English statement that will go out in every mail-in and absentee ballot that explains that question that was done by our solicitor, Dave Warner, and it will also be posted at all of the, not all, the polling place in South Anvil, which is the chapel there now in South Anvil, Fontana Chapel. So, and I will post that also on the website. And once the ballots are actually approved and certified, I will put the ballots, all the ballots on the website. I just don't want to put them on there until I have that certification, because I don't want to have it changed and then people be confused because of that. But yes, that is the difference, and thank you, Commissioner, for pointing that out. I did have a couple other points, if you don't mind, real quick. So one of the other things that we think is very important for people to start considering right now is if you want to vote by mail or if you want to vote by person. And it's more important that if you decide that you want to vote in person, that you understand or vote by mail, that you understand that really, once you make that choice, that's really what you should be sticking with, because we're going to be very, very difficult for us to try to give you more, let me start this again. I'm going to be scrutinizing requests for more than one ballot. Once you receive a ballot, that's the ballot we want you to vote on. Yes, we understand there are circumstances in place that would require possibly to have a ballot reissued, and we'll deal with those on a one-on-one basis as they occur. But what I don't want to see happen is somebody just decide, well, I don't know what's going to happen, so maybe I'll get it, but then I'll just decide to go vote in person. That's what we want to avoid, because you're going to cause more chaos at the polls if you decide to do that. So we really want people to, we're stressing that you want to make that decision and that's the way you want to vote. I had a little saying going in the primary, I'm not going to say it, Jamie knows what I'm talking about, but, you know, once you make that decision, you want to stick with that decision, is basically the gist. And at this point, you know, it's not a big deal if you're right now set to vote in person and then decide to do it, that's fine, but this is more of just trying to use this as a backup and then saying, oh, wait, I really do want to go vote in the polls. That's what's going to cause more problems at the polling location, because then we're talking about voiding ballots, then we're talking about provisional ballots. And we do have the option here to, if you get a mail-in ballot, to bring your ballot here. We are going to have a drop-off box here at the back of the building that is only available from 8:30 to roughly around 4:00, Monday through Friday, when the building is open. The sheriff deputies monitor that lockbox. It will be just for our ballots, the treasurer's office is getting their own box, only my staff, probably just two of us, will really be ones that will be going and getting those ballots out of there. We're going to have very strict restrictions in place for that. Those ballots get locked in our vault. We take security very seriously, so I just want to kind of stress that. I know we've talked about it before, but I think it's important for people to understand that one of the big things with this election is we don't want multiple ballots out there. And if you do receive a ballot in the mail, that's exactly the same ballot that you would get at the polling location. There is no difference, it's just the method of how you do it. So I think that's important. October 19th is the registration deadline to register to vote or make changes. October 27th is the deadline at this point to apply for or to be apply for a mail-in or an absentee ballot. I will tell you, we are encouraging people not to wait to the 27th. If you're going to do it, do it by the 20th. Because it's going to take two weeks for us to process, send you your ballot, and be able for you to receive it and get it back to us by the deadline to have it here, which is 8 o'clock November 3rd. So that's what we're encouraging people to do, you want two weeks. Don't wait to the 27th, because if we don't get your application until the 27th, then we process it and know your ballot, I guarantee if you wanted to count, you're going to have to hand-deliver it here at the, at the building, because there's not going to be enough time for you to mail it back to us a few weeks, the seven days. Okay, I think that's all I have, I know that's a lot, of course, Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd. I will be presenting some polling place changes to you as soon as we can get those solidified. There are two at this point that we do need to lock down, and we're still working on Seventh Ward and Jackson East, but I think that's all I have unless there's any questions.
I'd just like to reemphasize that with all the words, Michael, you covered an awful lot, but people may not take their mail-in ballots to the townships, boroughs, or the city, they must come to your office or that drop-off box in the back of the courthouse.
Yes, very good point. In the primary, we had a couple ballots, believe it or not, that were put in like book-return slots at township buildings. Yeah, there, we are not doing any other drop-off boxes except here. And the main reason for that is security. Those have to be secured, have to be monitored, and I just don't believe that we can safely assure people that ballots are dropped at any other location except for here are going to be able to be done safely and securely. And that's why I've never presented or asked for any other drop-off boxes. You have the ability to mail them, postage will be paid for any ballot that you return, that is something the state is covering for everybody in this election. So mail it, and I have complete confidence in the mail, just don't wait till the last minute, that's what they're telling us, don't wait till the last minute to mail it and expect it to be here by a certain date. It takes, you know, four days, three days, four days, so don't wait till the last minute. If you want to put it in a drop-off box, bring it here, we will have a drop-off box here, you know, and that is your choice if you want to do that.
Commissioner, I have one more question, Chairman.
Sure.
Our clarification, as it stands now, Michael, they must be not postmarked by Election Day, they must be in your office or in that mailed in, I'm talking about the mail-back ballots, they have to be mailed in time to get to you by that date, not postmarked by that date. So as it stands now, that's what we have to
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that, Commissioner. Yes, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, things that the governor would like to see happen, things the election directors would like to see happening. But yes, at this point, we have to have them by 8 o'clock on Election Day. That is, and has to be here. Anything received after that, postmarks do not matter, they will not count. So don't wait. And one of the big things we tell people is as soon as you get your ballot, if you know how you want to vote, you don't have to hold it, vote it, send it in. That's going to be the best way for us to process, and we're working on making sure that we get those in and received, so that those notifications that people can sign up for through votespa.com, you know, as soon as we market that we receive, then you can be assured that we have it and it will be counted. So yes, very good point, thank you, Commissioner.
And I think with prepaid, prepaid postage, there are no postmarks, so obviously, that would be another issue. So we want to make sure folks know that it doesn't matter when it's mailed, as long as it gets to your office by Election Day or hand-deliver it to, to the voter office or to the lockbox, yes.
Commissioner Ames, Laura LeBeau has her hand up.
All right, Laura, you have a question?
Yes, hi, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, all. Thank you for letting me ask this question. Michael, I was curious, at the primary election, my husband and I both voted with the no-excuse mail-in ballot, and we, we received a, an email message that the ballot had been received by your office, and, and that was very comforting and assuring. Is that, is that a courtesy that you did, or is that a requirement of voter registration to do that for folks?
No, great question, Laura. So it is not us at all, it is the Department of State, and it is their notification system, and you can go to votespa.com, and if you did not sign up when you, let's say if you did an online application, there is a place for you to enter your email to get notified, which would notify you for everything in the process, as far as when we mailed you your ballot, that we received your ballot and that your vote was counted. But if you did not do it that method and you're not sure, you can go to votespa.com under mail-in ballots, and you can actually enter an email address to be getting, given those notifications, and those all come from the Department of State. So as much as I would love to take credit, Laura, for that, I cannot, but I do think it's a great method to be able to do that and to give the voters reassurance that they have indeed, we have indeed received your ballot. But you have to be a little patient with that, too, because if you drop it off, don't expect you're going to get that, that email that night or probably even that next day, because there's some processing that we have to do to scan them in and, and as you know, checking the ballot, in the ballot envelopes with signatures and such on the security. So, so with everything, we ask for their patience, but yes, if you do that, we will scan it in, and then we do that, that triggers the notification that's been received.
And just one other thing, has there been any resolution as to whether your office personnel can begin processing received mail-in ballots ahead of the close of polls on Election Day? Or does all of that processing begin at 8:01 PM on Election Day?
Ah, so two parts related to that question. So Act 12 of this year, which actually moved the election date, part of that was it moved the canvassing timeframe from 8:00 PM from 8:00 PM Election Day to 7:00 AM Election Day. That's what we still have to have right now, is that we cannot touch those ballots or canvass them or open them until 7 o'clock on Election Day. There has been a lot of talk and a lot of push to try to get that moved up. The governor's asked for 21 days. I can tell you, some election directors have asked for at least three days. Three days would be perfect for us. But that is all pending, you know, the General Assembly and the governor and anything like that passing. Right now, we're at 7 o'clock Election Day. I've been in a wait-and-see with the board on my recommendation, because I'm trying to see if anything does pass, because then we have to make the determination if we're going to bring, if nothing does, if we have to bring other people besides my staff in to help open ballots. Because as you know, Laura, we are dealing with Election Day issues here on Election Day, and my staff wouldn't be available to open those. So it would have to be a whole other set of people to try to be able to do that. And as you know, in the primary, we can even start until Wednesday. And I know, and I know, I do, I want to know who wins on Election Night. And so that's why there's the push, and why we want to try to get results out to people as much as possible, and why we're encouraging people to get their ballots, mail-in ballots, in as soon as possible. Because the more we have, it's going to be. It's going to be available.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Hey, and Laura, why I have you on, if you don't mind. Reach out to me, email me if you have it. I'd like to have a discussion with you. I couldn't find an email for you. Everything I have is for your predecessor. So if you wouldn't mind reaching out to me at some point or calling me, that would be great, okay?
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. All right, anything else, Michael?
There's a lot of information, sorry. If anyone has any questions, you know, feel free to contact our office. They can email me. We're here to answer whatever questions, trying to be as transparent as possible with this. I know this is a very important election. People have very strong feelings both ways on this. Just rest assured, we're working very long hours trying to get everything processed. We've made tremendous strides this week alone in getting caught up, but you know, we're still going through especially online applications. So if you've done an online application, and you're thinking, well, I haven't gotten anything, you know, I'm going to do it again. Don't do it again, because we're getting lots of duplicates. I believe, I think we're up to the 26th of August right now on that. So, but we're hitting that pretty hard this week. So just be patient, we're getting to them all. The goal is to get as many of those done and processed before the ballots go out by the end of this month. That's my last thing, and thank you for all of your support. Definitely appreciate it.
Excuse me, Chairman. Make that your second last thing, Michael. How about make your last thing the phone number? You want people to call, give the phone number. Sometimes our menu is difficult for people to follow, so please do that.
Absolutely. So our number is 717-228-4428. That is the voter registration number, and we're here 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. You can also email at voter@lebcny.org. I do check that every day, and I can answer any questions. Or manderson@lebcny.org to answer any questions anybody has.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Michael. We all know a good election is very important to all of us. And here in Lebanon County, I think we all work very hard to make sure that that happens. And I especially want to thank you and your staff, Michael, for working so hard to secure the elections here in Lebanon County. With that said, do I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Elections?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All right, thank you, and we're adjourned.
All right, then we'll reconvene our regular meeting. And thank you, Michael, and Commissioner Ames. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which would be Mr. Daniel Lyons from Redevelopment Authority.
And he's coming in by telephone, not video. So since he's unmuted, there will be, there you go.
You left unmuted there, young Daniel.
Jay, can you unmute him?
I cannot unmute him. I did send him a text to ask him to unmute. It's really up to him. I don't have that control over his phone line.
Now, you know how these young people are with technology.
Yeah. Thank God we got into it early, Commissioner.
Jay, do you want to try bringing in the, his other sign in there? He's got two.
Looks more official.
I'll try unmuting on your sign in there, Dan.
Is one video and one audio?
Yeah, it's just not using the camera.
Okay, unmuted it, and it muted again. He must have double-clicked.
There we go.
He's got it, he's connected, there we go.
Something must have happened with the hamster.
Put another recorder in it, maybe.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
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 Okay, good morning. I apologize for that technical. Still can't seem to get this to work on the first try, so. Sorry for that. I'll get right into it here. I'm Dan Lyons with the Redevelopment Authority, and I have two items of business for the Community Development Block Grant Program. First up, I'm presenting the annual Fair Housing Resolution for your approval and adoption. This is a resolution that we usually present at the same meeting where we request your approval of our annual CDPG application, which we will be doing next month. However, this year, the State Department of Community and Economic Development asked us to have this resolution adopted ahead of time, because this resolution will actually instruct the authority to advertise a fair housing notice in the newspaper. And this year, they're asking that we include the proof of publication of that advertisement with our application. So I'm here a month earlier with this one, so that we can get the ad into the paper and include that publication proof with our application. So the Fair Housing Resolution is something that's adopted every year. It restates the county's commitment to equal opportunity in housing. It's been, it has evolved over the years slightly as additional protected classes are added into the language of the resolution. In addition to restating the county's commitment, it authorizes the publication of that ad that I mentioned, and it instructs us to conduct one activity every year to further the goals of fair housing. And these are typically outreach efforts. Last year, we instituted a policy that with the, in cooperation with the Housing Authority, that every time a new Section 8 voucher holder is given their voucher and begins shopping for an apartment or a unit, they are also given now a Fair Housing flyer from the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission that makes them aware of their rights under the fair housing law. This year, the activity was actually a partnership with Welsh Mountain Health Clinic that was doing some mobile coronavirus testing and information program. They were kind of going throughout the community and doing outreach on, related to the coronavirus, and I believe testing as well. And we had sent some materials, fair housing flyers, with them that were being distributed at those mobile testing sites. So that's essentially what the ad does. It restates the county's commitment, it authorizes the advertisement, and it instructs us to conduct a fair housing activity every year. So here I am presenting that resolution for your adoption, please.
Okay, accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual Fair Housing Resolution for the Redevelopment Authority.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Any discussion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. All right, Dan, that's that.
Thank you. My next resolution is actually Take Two for the CDPG CARES Act application. This was an application for a special allocation of CDPG money related to the coronavirus prevention and addressing the coronavirus. I presented this resolution in August for your approval, and then we submitted that application to the state. And then, since then, the state took issue with the resolution that I had drafted for the purpose of approving that application. And now what happened was, the state actually distributed their preferred language for this resolution. And it wasn't customizable. So I actually retyped it so that it would be relevant to the county of Lebanon, and inadvertently omitted a clause in the resolution that says that if the expenditure of these funds is later determined to be ineligible, that the county agrees to repay that ineligible proportion from non-federal sources. And that's a sort of a standard condition that we agreed to with the Community Development Block Grant Program. But that language had to be contained in the resolution. I omitted it accidentally. So now I have retyped it, and I'm resubmitting it for your approval.
Seek a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the resubmission of the CARES Grant Resolution.
I have a second, and I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Dan, can you tell me how many people have been helped with rent so far? And what that percentage, what the percentage of rejections are?
If you're referring to the CARES Rental Relief Program, I imagine?
Yes.
So far, we've made two rounds of payments, and I believe it's a total of 19 landlords that have received payment. And that's for months of rent, July and going backwards. Nobody has been certified for payment of August rent yet. And I think it's a very small number that have actually been rejected, and I don't have that exact figure for you. What we're seeing much more of is incomplete applications. You know, applications that have not been able to get to the point where CAP, who's conducting the eligibility and application review, can actually certify the eligibility. And that can be things where the tenant has to submit more recent income information or make us aware of any changes in their income. Or it could be that the landlord either has not submitted their portion of the application or submitted it but didn't complete the certifications, or did all of that but has not provided their banking information so that we can make payment. We have, you know, a number of applications that are in one of those stages of incompleteness that CAP is working diligently on getting to the finish line so that they can then send that group over to the Redevelopment Authority for another payment. But we did not make payments last week for that reason. And to date, we've made only two sets of payments, and I believe it's 19 landlords.
And can you tell me what the balance of funds are?
Roughly speaking, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of $460,000. It's a very small percentage-wise, a small percentage that's been expended. Although we've seen that statewide, I think we were last made aware that maybe 3% of the $150 million allocated by the state to PHFA has been expended.
And can you tell me, is your deadline the same as ours, December 30th?
As I understand it, PHFA is up against that same deadline as far as their obligation to get the money to communities, get it spent, and do the reporting back to the legislature. But they've given us a deadline of September 30th for receiving applications, and November 30th for making payments to landlords.
Okay. And then my final question would be, can you give an example of income limits for the tenants to apply?
Sure. The, it uses the 80% of area and median income. So for a family of four, that income limit right now is $61,600. For an individual, single-person household, it's $43,150. And they have to meet that income eligibility criteria, but they also have to meet the impact criteria, which is having lost their employment as a result of the coronavirus pandemic or experienced at least a 30% reduction in their income related to the coronavirus.
Thank you so much. I have landlords who are unhappy, I'll use that word. And these are some of the questions or reasons I've been given why they're unhappy. So I think you've answered a lot of questions today that will help them through the process, because I tell them they can apply, but they need to make sure the application is complete. That's the biggest reason they're not going through.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Okay, have a good day. All right, Jay, would you bring in Bob Dowd? So Mickey knows how to work the.
Morning. Trying to do that faster than anybody else, I hope it was good.
You did, you did. You won. Would you introduce yourself, Robert, and then you may proceed?
Certainly. My name is Bob Dowd. I am the Director of the Lebanon County Department of Emergency Services. I am here this morning asking that the Commissioners enter into a professional services agreement with MCM Consulting. The purpose of this agreement is to have them do a comprehensive assessment of our radio system and develop a strategic plan from that for the full upgrade slash replacement of that system. It is in the amount of $100,942.50. This will include everything from inventory of all equipment to identified specific pieces that have to be upgraded to user interviews, just to make sure that we capture any improvements we can make and take advantage of the upgrade opportunity to do that.
This is county-wide assessment of radios, and where will that money come from, Robert?
That will come out of our NIO1 funding. We have money for that.
But, all right. Seek a motion to approve that, and then we'll ask for questions.
I'll make a motion to approve it, and I do have some questions.
I'll second the motion, so that Commissioner Litz can ask her questions.
Very good, Commissioner, go ahead.
All right, yes. Bob, I was curious. The interior boosters on buildings, I think like Anvil Fire Company has one. Maybe I'm not using the right term, but they were having trouble with radios inside of buildings, and they put like boosters on them or Wi-Fi or something. Are those owned by us or the fire companies?
I'm only aware of one of those. It's actually active in the county right now. And I know there's a second one going in. I was not aware of one at Anvil Fire Company, at least.
Well, maybe I'm wrong, then.
There's, and without getting too technical, there's two different types. There's a passive system that just, it's an antenna outside and antenna inside, supposed to, you know, help convey that signal through metal walls. And then there's an active system that actually repeats. The active systems, I know of one of those currently and a second one going in place. We don't own any of those.
Okay.
Can, I can maybe fill in a little bit there. I know when the current radio system was installed, now going back, is that long, 15 years? Since we put that in. Anvil was a low spot in the coverage, we discovered. And so there was a small hole antenna that was installed at the. And so there was a small hole antenna that was installed at the Anvil, in the high school campus to boost the coverage in that area. We do own that antenna, but.
That's an actual.
It's actual site.
Yeah, it's an actual tower.
Okay. I, thank you, Jamie. That does ring a bell now that you said it. I just remembered Anvil had some sort of a booster. So then my next question is, what is the rationale for owning our own tower sites versus renting?
The cost of leasing tower sites, we are just shy of $200,000 a year in leasing for tower sites. It makes sense to own our own towers where feasible, and that's actually part of this study. We could be generating revenue from those towers if we own them and we lease space out to commercial carriers. You know, that could help make the system more sustainable.
And what does it cost to put in one site?
It depends on the site and, you know, a number of different variables, but somewhere between two and $300,000. We're essentially buying a site every year in leasing fees or every year and a half.
And does that money come from a separate pool compared to what we would draw from for any help with funding for a new 911 center?
The money that we're currently using for leasing fees is 911 funding. And that, we can use that same money for radio system upgrades. So it's, it's a separate pool, yes, but there are some pieces that are interchangeable.
Okay, so none of that could be used for the new 911 center then?
One of the big limitations with 911 funding is brick and mortar. We can't build physical infrastructure with it.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions.
Right. We have a motion and a second to have MCM Consulting do our assessment for the radio system. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so ordered. Bob, thank you for everything, and your questions answered very well. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, you can kick me out.
Do you have anything else? You're good.
I'm in good shape. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. That concludes the formal part of our agenda, but Jamie, do you have a few items that you'd like to?
Yes, I do have about a half a dozen items here, I think. First off, let me start with a couple of proclamation and resolution stuff here. I have a resolution for a grant for the multi, for a multimodal transportation fund grant of $425,000 for the common, from the Commonwealth. That's going to be used for the LVRT Phase 6A, the Winger Memorial Park Connector and Phase B at the Glaniver Park Connector. And this resolution simply designates me and Jonathan Fitzke the ability to execute the documents and agreements having to do with that grant.
I'll make a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll second the motion.
They moved and seconded that we approved that LVRT motion for Winger and Glaniver Parks. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, same sign, so ordered.
I have a proclamation for you, asking you to ratify this. This came up in between meetings. It was a proclamation to recognize Cameron Schaefer, who is a scout in Troop 74 of the Boy Scouts of America. He had achieved the rank of Eagle Scout on February 6, 2020. And his Court of Honor recognition was held over the weekend last week. And he, his project was that he and a group of volunteers removed eighty-five tattered and worn veteran grave markers at Gravel Hill Cemetery and replaced them and installed permanent markers and installed the appropriate war emblems for those, with those markers. So would ask for your approval on that, ratification on that proclamation.
I move that we ratify the proclamation for Cameron Schaefer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that Eagle Scout proclamation ratified, excuse me. Any discussion? Bill, were you attending?
I, I did attend. It was, it was a very nice event and an admirable young man. He's only a sophomore in high school and he's reached, achieved the Eagle level, which is often does not happen. So he really, really incredible and very active troop in today's world. That they're, you know, very well represented and did a great job, so.
What was the number of the scout troop again?
Seventy-four.
And that was in like Dolphin County or something?
Yes, but his, he and his family live in Palmyra, Commissioner.
That was my question, what the connection was to Gravel Hill. Thank you.
Well, as an Eagle Scout, Bill, I appreciate you doing that and taking, making your time available for those events. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, Jamie?
Yes, the next.
Can we vote?
We didn't vote on that.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Both same signs, so moved. All right.
I, I told them that we had unanimous approval, so I didn't, I don't want to disappoint them.
Very good.
All right, I want to take a few minutes to go over some, some approvals or request your approvals on a couple of things relating to the, the CARES grants. And those are the small business grants, the, the nonprofit tourism, et cetera, grants. And then also I have some invoices to be approved by you for the mask campaign that is also a component of the CARES allocation to Lebanon County, as you know. The, the application period was open from September 1st to September 15th. Closed up on four, at four o'clock on Tuesday afternoon. We had a very high level of interest in those grants. I think a little higher than maybe expected, but I would credit Bart Hoffman and Hoffman Creative and along with the other team members who I've had here at the meeting already. Karen Grove, the, of the Chamber, Brooke Smith, the United Way, Jen Kuzo from Tourism, Susan Everly from Economic Development Corporation. We also utilized Ben Garcia of Garcia, Garman and Shea. Great team that really also helped to get the word out. We had a number of questions that were posed to the info@lebanoncountycares.com. And the, and the whole process, I think, went really well. And I would say, maybe the risk of jinxing, I hope not, but we're, we're doing better than some of the counties who had a head start, have had a jump on this. Everyone knows we got a little bit of a late start in only receiving the money in, in later in August. But we were ready to go and got it out there, and there are a lot of applications, 275 roughly, applications. So the next step in that process is that the working group I just identified is going to go through and make sure they're all there for the completeness, any missing documentation, anything. Just basically a prep kind of period to make, to, to get them ready for review and for your ultimate consideration for grant awards. What we'd like to do is I'm going to ask for your approval to appoint an application, a CARES grant application review panel. They will look over the, the narratives of the application. Most of the components of the application are automatically scored by a rubric that was approved by you, by a scoring rubric that was approved by you. That's been set up so that if the information is filled in, it will, it gets an automatic score for, for the, the information being there and depending on the, the relative numbers to the category in some cases. In other words, we have certain grant levels for certain levels of, or sizes of the business. About eighty percent of the score is automated, and twenty percent of the score is going to be the narrative that was submitted. We'd like to ask you to appoint this panel to look through those narratives and give those narratives a score, all 275 of them. And then they'll, everything will be compiled and presented to you as recommendations for your approval of those grants, and I intend to do that on September 30th. And then we will work as quickly as we possibly can here to get those grants turned around and get the checks in the hands of the recipients. And providing there is sufficient funding to go through a second round, we will start a second round then October 15th. So I've spoken with each of you about some, some suggested names or some, some nominations for an application review panel. And I'd like to list five people here for you to consider. These folks I have spoken with, and they have all five agreed to, to serve on this panel and give their time and expertise and so on to this. And let me just walk through, and if I could just list them here. First member would be Donna Williams. Donna is the Chief Operating Officer of Lebanon Family Health Services here in Lebanon. I think you all know her and are acquainted with her. And she, speaking with her, she would be happy to help. Pat Kirwin is the Executive Director of the Expo Center. Again, has a tourism component, eye toward tourism and, and also a good background in having been with, with Perko in his past career, Lebanon, I'm sorry, the, the Farm Show Building and now at the Expo Center. Sonia Gross is with Stiefel Investors. I think you're acquainted with Sonia, who comes in often with Stiefel for an update on our, on our pension fund. She is a member of the Leadership Lebanon Valley class right now, and I think would be well suited for this kind of review. Christian Stahl, who is a young man who just graduated Villanova University with honors and who has landed a job in the finance industry. But part of the, the deal that his new employer required is that he works half of his time right now with them and half of his time be given to community service with some nonprofits in his community. So he is working, splitting his time between Lebanon County Christian Ministries and the United Way. And he's very excited to be, to serve on this committee if asked or if approved. And he's a resident of Mill Creek Township. And lastly, Jeffrey Roche is a healthcare strategist with Harrisburg University of Science and Technology. He is your appointee on the South Central Workforce Investment Board. He is a member of the Economic Development Corporation, the EDC Board. And so those five individuals recommend for approval of this application review panel. And then we will go through that process and get to you with recommendations. One thing I do want to mention is two of these members express concern that the organizations they work for have submitted applications. What I've told them and what I'll tell you is that when, when that application is reviewed, they will not be part of it. They will not score the narrative. Instead, we'll take the scores of four out of five panelists on that and average the four rather than average the five. So I think that's a easy way to avoid any conflict there and, you know. Any proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve the five nominees for the review panel, and I do have a question.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we'll consider questions. Commissioner Litz?
Yes, Jamie, I was just curious. You said all 275 app narratives will be read. If some of them do not qualify by the rubric or incomplete information, they would not be reviewed, would they?
I guess to be clear, those who, yeah, who, who pass through the completeness and the eligibility and all of that, yeah. Did I just use that number because I know that's approximately what the total is right now? That could go down.
I pray they do all go through, but I would hate to see them, if they're volunteers, reading extra that they didn't have to.
And if there's anything that's, you know, significantly missing or wrong with the application that it's a, you know, that keeps them from being eligible this round, they're certainly welcome in the next round. I know we had a number that were, a number of them that came in after the deadline, which was well publicized, and it was a two week period. And so those, those applications will be invited for the next round, I believe.
Would they have to resubmit if we go a second round?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? If not all in favor, the motion to approve these, this reviewed panel, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you. And as you'll recall, I think I've stated, if I said it once, I've probably said it a dozen times, but every dollar that is spent of these grants' funds will go through this meeting. So you will be the approving authority on every dollar that is spent. You know, for, for everything that, between now and the end of December. So with that in mind, I will likely at every one of your commissioner meetings have a list of invoices to be paid that will be the part of the, will be the recommended grants for the, under the CARES program for businesses, nonprofits and tourism, or anything relating to the mask campaign, which is the other component to this. So it's a little bit early in that, that your last meeting was well-publicized. You appointed or contracted with Fresh Creative in Lebanon here to, to oversee that campaign. And so I have a first invoice from Fresh Creative for retainer for the Pro-Rata portion of September, I'm sorry, of August. And then I also have two invoices for Public Relations that was purchased, ad space that was purchased to advertise the grants for the first round of application. So Fresh Creative would be the first invoice in the amount of $13,333.40. Second invoice is for Chimera, which is the Spanish radio station in Lebanon County. We have placed ads there for $500 and also for Lev Town News, which was, placed some digital advertising on there for the CARES grant program in tune of $800. So total invoices of $14,633.40.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as submitted or invoices, whichever you want to call them.
I'll second the motion.
They moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved.
Okay, two more items. In, in, in the packet of information provided to you, there is a letter of support being requested by Lebanon Valley College for the submission of a redevelopment assistance capital program grant from the Commonwealth. I think you're familiar with the otherwise known as RAPP grants. This is something that gets, it goes before the legislature and the, and the governor for their consideration and approval, I believe, as part of the annual budget. This grant, if approved, would be used toward the construction of a twenty, I'm sorry, yes, a 25,000 square foot facility that will be a four-year baccalaureate nursing program at Lebanon Valley College. And they've given reasons for the, the need for this, that RN positions are expected to grow by, the need for RNs are expected to grow by 13.4% between now and 2026. And LVC also recently opened a 55,000 square foot Arnold Health Professions Pavilion, which houses doctorates of physical therapy and masters in athletic training and some other disciplines that, that would dovetail with the, with the RN program. So this would be a letter of support, which is commonly requested by company leads applications.
I'll make a motion that we issue a letter of support for Lebanon Valley College for a RAPP grant.
Second the motion?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this request of Lebanon Valley College. Any further discussion? My only comment would be, we should revisit our RAPP for our emergency services building. Anything else? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved.
Last item is a veteran, disabled veteran exemption request from real estate taxes for Victoria May of Bates Drive, Anvil, having met all the requirements of the program.
I'll make a motion to approve a real estate tax exemption for Victoria May, disabled veteran.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved.
Yeah, you have assessment appeals at 130, commercial appeals. I'm not sure the count at this point, it was six or eight, the last I had heard, but I'm not sure exactly.
It's about right.
And just one thing to go back to the CARES applications. I mentioned about approving them on September 30th. That was the advertised date. Your, your next actual commissioner meeting is October 1st. Your next actual commissioner meeting is October 1st, but in order to adhere to that schedule of award and keep these moving, what I intend to do there is do a special advertisement that would allow you to take action as an advertised meeting at your workshop, your typical workshop on the 30th. But, and the only action item would be those grants. So it would be, you know, advertise anyone who would want to join in the meeting and so on could do so, but that would make that a legally advertised, actionable meeting, and we can stay on schedule, so.
Good thinking.
Very good, Jamie. Thank you. All right. Anything else for the good?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.